smiles on their faces when they win that award is golden. It was a beautiful day, beautiful morning. The mayor was there on the top of the tail from the county building. And these, these young men and women, you have to be there to realize what an effort they put into all this stuff. I learned a good thing last week. We had a meeting with the Meadowbrook Project. We actually have everybody on the same page now. We had some questions a few weeks before. There was a meeting on the sixth of May at East Gate. We had EPA, East Gate, the board members, park board members, and members from the, from Warren Township. Everybody now is under the, the fact to know that we can put this together without conflict or any problems as far as the dam is concerned. Gary, you want to respond on that one?
Yeah, Commissioner, the, the main concern with the dam removal and any conflicts it may have with the sanitary sewer project was if the dam is taken down before the sanitary sewer is in place, would we have some of that septic effluent coming off the septic tanks that are currently have piping going in subsurface of the river? Once that, the level of the river drops, is, are these pipes going to be exposed and cause septic effluents solids to be accumulating on the banks of the river? And we came up, after we've thought through this enough, we came up with a rather simple solution. That if that is the case, if that dam does come out, if we don't get sewers in first, then we have a contingency plan to go ahead and add an extension to the ends of those pipes and go ahead and project them back underneath the surface of the river. And that solves a whole lot of problems and it's a rather simple fix.
Yeah, I want to thank EPA for working with us.
Yes.
Because without their cooperation, who's to know?
Yes, and EPA, they did give their blessing to this also.
And they've been phenomenal over the years. They helped us with most of our sanitary sewer projects.
Yeah.
Ready the projects. We had to stop the USDA from stopping us from doing the projects. And EPA stepped in and made sure we did the projects.
Yeah.
So they've been very cooperative for this. Thank you for the great job you do here.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, let's start.
I have a question about the, the project. I know that I've talked to you before about the cost and my concerns were about the, the one portion of the meeting that dealt with the floodplain issues.
Yes.
And I talked to you specifically in the past about modifying the plan and, and going after a grant that would effectively buy back properties of those who are in the floodplain and ask if you are able to still do, provide the services that you're planning to, but not include areas that were flooded and, that were flooding or affected in that way. Is that something that can be done to, to modify the plan? Because it's very costly and the quality of life there with the flooding problem is, is just something that I think that we should consider. And I know you just disagreed with it and I don't think I've talked to the rest of the commissioners about it, but there is the ability to go after grants so that you can buy back those properties for people who are, even if you give them perfect water, perfect sewer, they're still going to experience flooding.
Yeah.
We actually.
I'm, I'm talking to the engineer. I'd like to respond.
Yeah, Commissioner, on that, there are some homes down there that are in what's called the floodways compared to floodplain. Just about all of them are in the floodplain. And even if we were to pick out those homes that are in the actual floodway and try to do that, you know, what you are describing here is trying to buy back their properties. We still, in order to put the grid out there for a collection system, we're still going to have to go past those properties. I, I don't see if we were to go out, you know, buy up some of the properties, it's still not going to affect the overall design of the collective system itself.
Who's designing it?
Bertus and Nifol.
Have you talked to them about, about options? I mean, if they're designing it, but you're telling me that you can't do it that way, who's designing it, you or them? Yeah?
Well, Bertus and Nifol is, and it's based on picking up all the properties that are within the limits of the consent.
Okay.
So in order to pick those up, we are going to have to go past some of those properties that are in the floodway itself. Now, there was an issue brought up by TJ from the Planning Commission at this meeting regarding these homes in the flood, in the floodway. And right now, there's three identified, but he said there's possibly up to 200 out there, which is unfortunate. But I don't see any way that we could, how that's going to affect our design because I still have to go past these houses to get to the other ones. Worst case scenario is that we're only going to have 450 property owners contributing on the, the payment of the long-term debt with the capital charges compared to 650. We may lose a third of our, of the customer base.
I don't think that's.
That's the worst case scenario, very worst case scenario.
But I don't think that's.
I don't think that's going to happen.
TJ would explain that.
Yes.
The, that's a completely different situation there. That's something we're going to have to deal with, with our, with TJ and FEMA.
Yes.
Now, actually, in the past, FEMA did offer to buy some of those homes from some of those citizens. I believe that was about 10 years ago when we had the 50-year reign. And they refused. They were willing to buy them a home in a better location, build a home for them. They refused. But TJ is working on that also. FEMA is willing to relocate some of these people.
Okay.
We don't have all the details on it right now.
If that's the case, i- if they were to do all, we, we lose 200 of the customers.
Yeah, but I don't see.
But I don't see that being that, getting that.
Way that works really.
How's that going to affect the cost to lose 200 customers?
Well, we may have to turn into four businesses instead of three in order to keep the capital charge down.
I think we got to work. We have to work with TJ.
We've hired, we've hired an attorney. We've had an executive session on this. Ms. Frenchco was not at that executive session. We've discussed it in the executive session. I suggest you contact our attorney that we've obtained and we're, we're working through that right now.
Yeah, that was the executive session that I called in and our staff dropped the ball on patching me in.
No, that was the one where Governor DeWine's.
Ms. Frenchco, just stop.
And I was on the phone and called in and they did the wrong.
I'm just telling you, you weren't here.
Okay, but at any rate, this has nothing to do with that, Commissioner. I don't know if you're familiar with the grant program where they actually.
Yes, it does. It has everything to do with it. It has everything to do with it. Please. I don't want to engage you. I don't want to argue with you.
This, this project costs much more than it could if we were to actually address some of the, some of the needs there by relocating people who don't necessarily.
As Mr. Fuda said, we tried.
Don't interrupt me. Don't talk over me.
FEMA has tried that in the past.
Or talk over me.
But you're talking about things that you don't know.
Don't, no.
I'm saying 10 years ago, these people were asked.
Were you there 10 years ago?
No, but I know the fact because I was in the executive session. I was in executive session.
Turn that down.
Why does this have to happen every meeting?
It's unreal. In executive session, we've discussed all this. You could have been.
Now, I'm going to explain something. First of all, FEMA is an insurance program. All they deal with is flood insurance. People who live in a certain area, if they need a loan, the lending institution will require them to have flood insurance. That's what FEMA is about. Those 200 homes, most people aren't going out for a loan. Most of them own those homes. Those are 30 years and above. Most of those homes are owned now by somebody. The problem will arise. If they want to sell a home, the lender may require them to have flood insurance. This is what it's all about. I dealt with that as a councilman in Niles. We had people in a flood area. We were able to move 120 people flood from the flood insurance program because of the rules and regulations. I dealt with it for years. But it has nothing to do with your project. Your project is going to deal with all those homes. The problem a homeowner will have is if they have to get a loan, second mortgage or sell that home, the new person might have to have flood insurance. That's, it's all my hardship.
And that's, that presents a terrible hardship for people, just coming from someone who's worked in real estate for 20 years.
And I agree wholeheartedly, and that was the, the entire discussion in the executive session. So we retained an attorney. I suggest you talk to him.
Yeah, I didn't think.
I suggest that the staff be investigated for their consistent failure to do things properly, such as give us the right numbers for calling into meetings, such as losing 40.
Ms. Frenchco, stop. We're going to go on with this. Stop making up stories.
You just broke that.
I don't care.
I, I was talking.
I'm done with you making up stories. Nobody, we're doing our job. You know who needs to be investigated? You, for everything that you're doing to all of these workers. You're devastating these people.
Okay.
And if we were a company, we'd be out of business today with the lawsuits. Yes, we would. Now, let's move on to the meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Start the agenda.
It should have started before.
That's enough.
Exactly.
Are you fine? You finished?
No.
You want to make all the rules here, then you break the rules, then you make rules, then you break them. And you just chalked. You don't even know what this job's about. I'm here working every day. You're not.
Point of order.
Now, point of order. Get the meeting started.
Point of order. The meeting is not to be used for political attacks.
No, Ms. Frenchco, you're the only one. Start the meeting.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes. Here.
Ms. Frenchco?
Here.
Mr. Fuda?
Yes.
Item number one to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated May 11, 2022.
Move.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Fuda?
Yes.
Item number two to approve the bills.
Move.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Fuda?
Yes.
Item number three to transfer monies.
Move.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Fuda?
Yes.
Item number four to approve additional appropriations.
Move.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Fuda?
Yes.
Item number five to transfer appropriations.
Move.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Fuda?
Yes.
Item number six to receive the amendment certificate of the County Budget Commission, item number nine, 2022.
Move.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Fuda?
Yes.
Item number seven, resolution to award the lowest and best proposals submitted by Stooling Carpet and Floor Covering for all labor and material necessary for the installation of new carpeting carpeting for the 11th District Court of Appeals Courthouse. This also will include the removal of existing, existing carpeting as required. Moving and reset of furnishings and total cost is $47,465.74 and to further authorize Frank S. Fuda, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute any and all necessary documents. And the other proposal submitted was Endoff Incorporated and they were at $57,598.78.
Move.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Fuda?
Yes.
Item number eight, 2% Journal Action dated April 27, 2022, Journal Volume 1,444, Page 24754, authorizing Frank S. Fuda, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute the 2023 Ohio Department of Transportation Urban Transit Certificate Third Party Service Provider. This action is being rescinded after the transit administrator was informed by ODOT that this certification was not required for the 2023 ODOT grant application.
Move. Second.
Discussion. I just want to point out that when this item and five other items that related to this application were on our agenda, they were all premature. This one, as well as the other ones, were, were written contingents on the Board of Commissioners reviewing the applications prior to submission. Our, our transportation administrator had no idea what he was doing. That's why these were all done this way. That's why this one has to be pulled. And I just wanted to point that out.
There should be discussions. We have an executive session about personnel.
Why would you say this person didn't have any idea what he was doing? Ms. Frenchco, you make comments about workers meeting after meeting that are incorrect.
This is factual.
You don't know, Ms. Frenchco.
I actually do.
No, you don't, Ms. Frenchco. Pretend.
I.
Move on, Ms. Frenchco. Let's go.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
It wouldn't have to be rescinded if anyone was doing.
Mr. Fuda?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes. And I'd like to move to eliminate the county transit administrator position that's $140,000.
That is not the salary.
Ms. Frenchco, that has nothing to do with what we're doing. You keep saying we're going out of, we're not, this is not business that we're dealing with, but you keep coming up with stuff.
Point of order. I have a motion on the floor.
There is no motion. Let's move.
So first of all.
President, address the motion, please. Point of order.
I'll set my second for a discussion. First of all, that is not his salary.
Your second.
Second of all, he, he put this on the agenda. He told the board that he may be taking it off. He told us that.
Exactly. He was unsure.
So what about that is bad?
All of the, all of the items that were, all of the items that Mr. Salamone placed on the agenda were contingent upon approval because he didn't even have an application in place. This is all done backwards. Yesterday, I believe it was, he wasn't able to attend our meeting because he was calling WRTA for advice on how to put together a grant application. When we're paying someone a complete salary package of $140,000 and then they should be able to do work without trying to hire assistants, without asking the Director of WRTA on how to do their job. I, I think that it was a mistake. I, I think that the county needs to take care of the mistake and they need to eliminate that position.
Again, those are a lot of assumptions. I don't know if you were on that call with him and WRTA.
Ms. Frenchco, you are so ignorant. You know nothing about what you're talking about. And you're also.
Point of order. This is an attack on me. Point of order. It is not your job to say that I don't know anything.
It's a discussion.
You, Ms. Frenchco.
Commissioner, point of order.
He's not very shot to say that Mike Salamone doesn't know anything.
Point of order.
It's an attack on a worker, Ms. Frenchco. What are you doing?
You should do this in executive session, period.
I'm an executive and I can make whatever discussions that I want. I'm not attacking the board.
Oh, you are, but we're not allowed.
You're opening this county up to liability is what you're doing. You already have lawsuits against you. You're about to buy another one. Go into executive session if you'd like to address this or don't talk about it.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
This is a motion to term.
You are supposed to call the roll and not remind people or talk to people. It is a motion.
Listen, that's why these motions from the floor are confusing.
This is a motion to remove Michael Salamone is what we're voting on.
We're not, we're not removing Michael Salamone.
No.
And so you're not the force commissioner. You're supposed to call the roll and do your job and that is it.
I've already made a motion on the other. We had a motion on the other. So that's what I was moving on.
No, no, the other. She knows what she did and she knows where we were. If you two commissioners don't know, then that's a problem.
Stop, stop, please stop.
Because of the confusion I just.
We know what we want to vote on and what we don't. Please.
I can keep my record.
You keep your record and you let us deal with the rest of the business.
You want to deal with games and tricks and all that? Don't do it. Don't do it. We know what we want to do and you know what you want to do.
Okay, you're, you're criticizing a worker here, Ms. Frenchco.
Can you call, finish call?
Point of order. We begin calling the roll. Finish it. Point of order. We need to finish what we're, we're doing. Discussion is over. After the second, the discussion is finished. The roll has started to be called. Point of order. President, if you please control the meeting.
I make a new motion. I make, I make a new motion to accept the original motion that was on the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Fuda?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Guess that's already been voted on.
There's still a motion without a vote and you know that, clerk.
I'm trying to keep my record because I have to have it accurate. That's all I'm doing. Item number nine to close the road listed. That will be Hunt.
You didn't finish the, the vote on the other one. Calling the roll on my motion from the floor.
Why do you keep making motions from the floor? You tell us that we can't make them, we can't put anything on the agenda unless we put it in on the Thursday before and you keep making motions from the floor.
Point of order. This is.
That's what you do.
Not related to the, we have a, a motion that needs to be voted on.
Move on to the next agenda.
Move on to number nine to close the road listed. Hunt.
Clerk, we have a motion that needs to be a completed vote.
You have to complete the vote.
Mr. Cantala Mesa's motion.
I moved that motion on agenda. I can move on.
No, he actually, that, that was already voted on. That was already voted on. There was a motion on the floor.
We're done with it. We're done with it.
Correct. There was a motion on the floor that needs to complete roll call.
I don't believe it got a second.
He, he seconded it for discussion. You heard it.
He said he seconded it. He thought he seconded it first.
I seconded the first motion.
No.
I'm just saying the statement I have to follow this.
Oh, my gosh. Are you serious?
You have to, you have to.
The motion to remove the transit administrator was made by Commissioner.
To eliminate. Yes.
Eliminate, okay.
To eliminate the position of transit administrator.
Is there a second for that?
He already seconded it and then we had discussion. And then you called the roll. You took my vote, then you reminded him where we were because he was confused and about to vote yes and you didn't want him to vote yes, told him where we were. And then he voted no. Then he went back to the previous item, which was number nine, and we never completed the vote for that.
Do you hear yourself for all these people listening? It is ridiculous. It is ridiculous.
This is why you don't want us to put the cameras on the wall to rap you.
And I'm tired of it.
You want to do that.
Can we finish the roll?
We'll show you your legal problems that you have.
Can we finish the roll?
This is 29 cases against you.
I will point of order. However he stated, he was only seconded for discussion.
Yes, and you still call the roll. What, where, what's wrong with you, with everyone? When you second it, you still have to call a roll. Doesn't matter what they say for it. You call the roll, clerk.
Commissioner Frenchco?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantala Mesa?
No.
Commissioner Fuda?
No.
Thank you. Item number nine to close the road listed. Hunt, Hunt, Club Trail.
Move.
Second.
Discussion is going to be, this is going to be a lengthy one. I said, I said discussion. I said this is going to be a lengthy closure for about a month.
Okay, I got a discussion. I called the meeting on Thursday, just as you did. And the highway department wouldn't come to my meetings for a few minutes and did come to yours. Do they think there's only one commissioner here?
Maybe they can respond on the phone. Can we invite someone to respond? I, I don't know. I can't speak for anyone.
Well, I don't understand. They make your, and you keep me here for an hour. Every time I see, have a meeting, I see you here with them for an hour for simple stuff, stuff like this. One hour and more.
No, that's incorrect.
That's true.
Okay, so they didn't come to your meeting. They attended mine. Thank you.
Now, I want to investigate this before I vote on it. From now on, anything from the highway, I want to investigate because they come in here and they say things that aren't true. And you okay with them all the time. So you two work together.
If we're talking about road closure, they sent the supporting documentation.
Move.
Commissioner.
Move on.
Commissioner Frenchco?
We'll vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuda?
No.
Thank you. Item number 10 is to authorize the trouble county engineer to revise the legal weight limit for the Warren number line structure.
Move.
Second.
Discussion. I just wanted to mention that this is also, just as the item that was last, on late last week's agenda. The weight limit change is occurring, but it should be corrected in 2023. According to Gary Shaefer, they're applying for grant money, so there should be no additional cost to the county to renew the bridge.
Same situation. They didn't come to explain any of this to me. And meeting after meeting, they come in here and attack our workers. Unless I get discussion from them, I can't support.
Well, the, they came into this $30,000 error and, and that affects all taxpayers.
Commissioner Frenchco?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuda?
No.
Item number 11 to accept the resignation of Mr. Christopher Murray from his position of Labor Water with the trouble county sanitary engineers department effective May 6, 2022. Mr. Murray's resignation letter shall be recorded on the journal for record purposes.
Move.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Fuda?
Yes.
Item number 12 to authorize the Board of Trouble County Commissioners Clerk to advertise for request for statement of qualifications or letter of interest for consultant engineering services for the Champion Vizzetta Water Booster Station, project number one, W22, located in Vizzetta Township.
Move.
Second.
Discussion. I just wanted to let people know. I've already talked to the township trustees over in Champion. One of the primary reasons for this is, is in preparation for the Mercy Health Campus anticipation of that. So just wanted to let people know that, that they are satisfied in Mercy with, with how we handle the road. And this is us being proactive to address the water.
I want to discuss also, we've had a lot of controversy on this one. We actually had some phone calls months ago, but fortunately Gary Newbrough was able to get the information that we needed to make sure this would go smoothly. You want to explain that, Mr. Newbrough?
Yeah, yes, Commissioners, I don't think there was ever any question as to the, the availability of water at this site. The county, we do have a line on educational highway that goes down to, currently to the TCTC right now. Even though that line is not active, we are serving that from, excuse me, Research Parkway. We have another line coming down from the north to the south to TCTC. It has plenty of capacity in it to serve this hospital. And if, if need be, we will open up a line on educational highway also.
Yeah, there was a rumor from somebody that this wouldn't happen and I don't want to get into it. It's the same argument we had last week. But you clarified that because when I talked to the trustees from Champion, they were a little bit confused because of rumor they, they got from somebody else.
Right, yes.
You straightened that out pretty quick.
Yes.
Thank you, Gary.
All right.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Fuda?
Yes.
Item 13 to enter into a non-reimbursable extension agreement for the extension of a sanitary sewer in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code with Howland Commons LLC and Meyer Stores Limited Partnership on Portland Road within Howland Township. And this is for project number one, S22.
Move.
Second. Just in this special, this was a company that was going to come here for several years ago and they changed their mind and then they began discussing. This is a great addition to Howland Township and Eastwood Mall.
Ms. Frenchco?
Well, I also wanted to mention, because I, I found out after some discussion yesterday, a lot of the areas over there, they have, it's some, we've had sinkholes over there. And Meyer, the store that's locating there, has a requirement that they will be addressing all of the stormwater in a, a certain way. And there's not going to be any risks or any problems with that, even though it's not necessarily our sanitary engineers department. When I talked to Scott Burner yesterday, he was explaining how they do that. So I know that there are some problems with that parking lot the other side of it, but there shouldn't be moving forward because Meyer has a very good plan in place to address stormwater management.
Do you have sinkholes in that whole area?
Yeah, there has been, and I just, that's why I'm sharing that it should be addressed better with Meyer because of their, the way they do business.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cancelo Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Fuda.
Yes.
Item number 14 to approve detailed surveillance of Howland Commons LLC and Meyer Stores Limited Partnership on Niles Portland Road within Howland Township. And this is also for project one S22.
Move.
Second.
Yeah, I just wanted to discuss. This is another addition to probably one of the best malls in the world. If you go to that Eastwood Mall in Hornet, you'll see guys walking around.
Niles.
Why do you interrupt me?
Sorry.
They walk around, and they even pick up little cigarettes. It's the cleanest mall exterior and interior I've ever seen. And the Kefaro Company, in the last many years, have done a phenomenal job. That's one of the main developments in Trumbull County. And I appreciate everything that the Kefaro Company has done to keep that there. When other malls were folded.
Okay, point of order discussions, the discussions deviating from the sewer and the Howland, Truman, Meyer.
You don't let anybody talk. You don't.
Point of order has to focus on the discussion of the item.
Why do you stop people from talking? You don't want any positive stuff said about Trumbull County. Because your job is to try to make Trumbull County be dysfunctional.
Point of order, point of order, point of order. Discussion has to focus on the agenda.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cancelo Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Fuda.
Yes.
Item number 5, 15, to approve the personnel action for the employment of Ms. Juliana TT as a telecommunicator, excuse me, with the Trumbull County 911 Center effective June 5, 2022. She will be paid the rate of 16.514 per hour and serve a 180-day probationary period.
Move.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cancelo Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Fuda.
Yes.
Item number 16 to approve the personnel action for the employment of Jessica Rose as a telecommunicator with the Trumbull County 911 Center effective June 19, 2022. She will be paid the rate of $18.165 per hour and serve a 180-day probationary period.
Move.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cancelo Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Fuda.
Yes.
Item number 17 to approve the personnel action for the employment of Heather Soder as a telecommunicator with the Trumbull County 911 Center effective May 22, 2022. She will be paid the rate of 19.431 per hour and also serve that 180-day probationary period.
Move.
Second.
Discussion. We have three people that are, really desperately need, need to fill that staff there. Unfortunately, we lost one of the former persons just last week. So we're gonna have to add on more people. We have applicants. Hopefully, they'll find some more workers from those applicants. 911 is very important to us. That's for the safety of our people. I'm happy that we have three here. Hopefully, all three is gonna work out.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
And Mr. Cancelo Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Fuda.
Yes.
Item number 18 to concur with the Trumbull County Plan Commission Board to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to execute Amendment Number One to an agreement dated January 5, 2022, Journal Volume 154, Page 24492, with Lynn Kinney, Journal, Incorporated. The Amendment Number One reflects an increase in cost for additional households income qualified to date to receive assistance under this program and reduce the scope of services being performed.
Move.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
I was just gonna say discussion. I think this is good. Reducing the scope of services was, I think it was administration and implementation that the consultant was going to be getting, and that just goes right into their profit. So it's nice to see that the amendments and the changes are going to actually equate to services for the population.
I don't have this part in the agenda, so, all right, you want to give me the copy?
Yeah.
This short.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cancelo Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Fuda.
Yes, it's agenda item 18, okay.
Item number 19 to concur with the Trumbull County Plan Commission to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to execute Amendment Number Two to an agreement dated January 5, 2022, Journal Volume 154, Page 24492, with Lynn Kinney, Journal, Incorporated. The Amendment Number Two reflects an increase in cost for additional household income qualified to date to receive assistance under the HSTS Reserve Program.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cancelo Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Fuda.
Yes.
Item number 20 to remove from table, item number 11, under the agenda date of May 4, 2022, Journal Volume 154, Page 24769, which reads as follows, "To require all department heads under the Board of Commissioners to develop departmental and office policy manuals, inclusive of workflow charts, and a training manual for each category of employee to be submitted and approved by the Board of Commissioners by September 1, 2022, and an initial draft July 1, 2022."
Move.
This item requires for lack of a second.
Item number 21, can't go on without 20, so agenda.
Okay, so I'd like to move from the floor to require the Trumbull County Commissioners' Office to, under the Board of Commissioners, to develop departmental policy manuals, inclusive of workflow charts and training manuals for every category of employee to be submitted by the Trumbull County Commissioners. To be completed, I think I've expressed that, to be completed by September 1, within an initial draft by July 1. We recent, we recently had a situation where the ball was dropped in our office, and it cost the county taxpayers a lot of money. From May 1, I've wanted to have tracking of workflow. I've asked for these things. This has been on the agenda three times. It's been voted down. I also spoke individually with the employees and asked that they would start documenting what they do so that we can develop this. When Paula Godfrey was forced out of the county, she took a lot of institutional knowledge with her. And without having that documented, it leaves, leaves a lot of margin for error by staff who did not adequately know how to pick up the ball. And we need to have better training in place so that we don't have costly mistakes in the future. Not so costly, but annoying was a developer who had a final repla sit on someone's desk for two months because they, the employees didn't know what to do with it. This is the kind of thing that I've seen continuously, and I think that we need to take action to prevent mistakes like that from happening because it's in the best interest of taxpayers.
Okay, I'll comment on that.
Okay, are you seconding?
No. I'll comment on it after the meeting.
Okay.
So you die for a lack of a second.
Okay.
But you know.
Okay, so then I also have another motion from the floor, and that is to investigate the County Commissioners' Office staff for violations of our county policy and procedure manual over the last year. And then we need to do that right away because we've got people not completing work in a timely fashion. And it's just, it's out of control. Okay.
That dies for a lack of a second.
Okay.
Now, one of the reasons, I don't know what you bring all this stuff up for, because we are reviewing this. We have someone working on that item. We want to investigate before we do something that we're duplicating. So we're gonna get some information on this, and I told you that last time you put it on the agenda. And you know what the problem is, Ms. Frenchco? I have a lot of work to do here. You keep asking people for records and records, and you don't look at them. If you look at it in front of you, all of that stuff you require.
Point of order, point of order, this is becoming a task, and it's not about county business. The discussions of our meetings have to relate to county business, not personal attacks.
You're done, Ms. Frenchco. This isn't a personal attack. You have all that work in front of you that these people are required to do, and you don't even read it.
Personal attacks are point of order.
I'm not attacking you, Ms. Frenchco. I'm telling the truth.
These are items that I presented since I started.
You're done, Ms. Frenchco.
I'm talking. These are items that I've presented since I started working here a year ago. So to say that, you know, we're going to investigate something for over a year, a year and a half, it seems, it seems a bit disingenuous. We need to take action instead of continuing to investigate and think about whether or not we're going to bring policies to the county that are gonna benefit the taxpayers.
You don't even know what policies we have, Ms. Frenchco. You know, you just talk. Why don't you have the work here?
Okay, point of order.
Point of order is right, Ms. Frenchco. You want, you think you're Robert. You make all the rules, meeting after meeting after meeting. You want to follow Robert's rules, but you're not Robert. You can't keep making rules and telling people, making people do work that's unnecessary. When are you gonna, and you're wrong. You've been here for 16 months, not a year. You've been here 16 months, and you still don't know what you do here. Maybe we need an investigation of your actions.
Point of order. This is not county business.
Okay, well, let's move on.
This is not for county. The county meeting, the business meeting is for the executives to discuss business of the county, not for personal attacks.
This is not a personal attack. This is business of the county. We're wasting $200 extra a month to run all this stuff off that you don't read. You don't. And you give them an email for them, and then you want to then hard copy.
I also move from the, I make a motion from the floor to have the Board of Commissioners investigate within our office or our special projects person collaboration software because that too would have prevented the costly mistake. Because, and it would prevent the requirement to make copies of things because we could use software in order to identify the workflow and the documentation supporting the agenda items.
And I got a question. Why are you asking everybody to run this stuff up for you?
I've been asking, you know, are you seconding this for discussion?
I'm asking you, you want to use software.
There's a motion with the explanation.
Then you expect them to run this up for you, and you take it and you put it in the garbage.
There's, that's not true. There's a motion, point of order. We have a motion on the floor that had an explanation. Is there a second? Do I need to take control and be the president? There's a, is there a second?
That's for a lack of a second.
Okay.
How many more do you want to do? Go ahead. How much longer do you want to keep everybody?
This looks an awful lot like targeting. A lot of these people have legal action against one commissioner, and this looks a lot like targeting. I mean, now you've pared this down from all these departments to just this department. I just, it looks a lot like targeting for me, and I'm not gonna participate in that. I'm not. I think the people in this office work hard. I think they're good people. They have good families, and they live in this community. We have to stop targeting them and start trusting them a little bit more.
I have.
And people come in here, can I just say something? People come in here with a pit in their stomach because they don't want to deal with you. And that's a problem.
No.
That's, no, it is a problem.
I would be happy to share every video.
Whether you want to recognize it or not, that leads them around town.
I would be happy to share every video with the media, with everyone, that I have. My employees completely refusing to do anything that I ask. No, now, don't interrupt me. I'm speaking. I'm speaking.
You can't paste those videos.
I'm speaking.
I've noticed you degrade, degrade other employees. Yes, I have. I don't take a lie detector test if you will.
You've called me a scumbag.
I never called you that.
Yeah, I have it recorded.
Please.
And you shook in your face out. You screamed at the staff, told them to go find jobs elsewhere.
Stop being a child. This is why no one can have a discussion because we're unable to work together. Everything that gets brought up becomes tit for tat.
I will then, I will make sure that on my association.
You're unable to cohesively work together like this. Until you stop putting your ego first, and you start moving the county first.
Stop interrupting.
Stop interrupting me. Seriously, until you put your ego.
You're an abusive narcissist, and I'm tired of this.
Ms. Frenchco, I think you need to be investigated.
I want to respond.
It's beyond ridiculous. We've turned this into a sideshow.
Fuck for fuck.
You've targeted these women. You've targeted these women. You didn't even know what they did. You didn't even know what their jobs were. It's ridiculous.
This department has lost the county money. It is the only one, so of course, that's the one I want to investigate first.
Ms. Frenchco. That is your opinion.
You are.
That's not my opinion.
Yes, it is your opinion.
It's the opinion of.
You should listen to the opinion of your workers that do the work here every day, not show up to meetings and vote. They actually do the work.
You allow. You facilitate misconduct if it's directed towards me, and it's not fair.
Doing their job, period.
I would like, I would like to show videos of all the employees.
Full of press conference of doing.
No, an executive session. This is ridic, this is ridiculous.
An executive session?
I tried to have executive sessions to discuss the misconduct, to show the rest of the board what they do.
You put it on the agenda.
But you allow, you allow it.
You put it on the agenda. You haven't had executive session with that.
Regular stories up, Ms. Frenchco.
I, we're gonna go.
It is lies. It is lies, and you need your own lies. Sad.
They're gonna go on a YouTube channel then, so people can see it.
Now, you are a big component of Robert's rules. And you will not let anybody speak because we let you speak.
You were tackling me wide.
You stopped us from speaking.
The discussion is about staff misconduct, but you turn it around to attack me.
I have your own commissioner misconduct here. That's what we have.
No.
And when I, I'm gonna speak to the press also.
Of course you do.
The press seems to follow, and Paul, let's say, we're having problems. We have a well-run county here.
No, we don't. We absolutely don't.
No, we have one.
It's a shame. The press knows. We have a building right now that there's a notice to vacate. And I know that you guys don't know about it because it hasn't been in the paper. We are such poor, we are so poor at management that they want to, that we have 911 building falling apart. We've got the Board of Elections building falling apart to the point where the city has had to come and do an inspection because they're talking about giving a notice to vacate. We've got the deteriorated lien building. They purchased for $700,000 a bank building that was extremely inflated. I don't know how, who got benefited from that deal, but it certainly wasn't the county.
But it's okay for you to say that.
It's terrible, and right now, we don't even have any building that is graded properly so that we know.
Why aren't you putting on the agenda the buildings you want to build?
I, what are you talking about?
What, what do you suggest we do with these buildings?
I actually am the one who got the lien building added to the list for demolitions because Mike Woodchuck.
You did nothing. You did nothing. That was TNP.
No, that was because I contacted Sean because Mike Woodchuck contacted me.
I hate to tell you this, but Julie Green and the Planning Commission have been talking about that before you even thought of running for this job.
No, I added that to the list. I have the emails.
Okay, believe it or not, I am not doing this.
So what I'm saying is.
I move to adjourn.
We have no, we have no.
Second.
Mr. Cancelo Mesa.
No public comments? There was someone who had their hand up for public comments.
We don't have time, Ms. Frenchco.
This is terrible.
Yeah, because you're exposed. When you close the meeting, go.
Look at this. Look at the childishness. Look at it. She's playing to her own self. I mean, it's, it's so sad. It is so sad.
And every time she does it, she puts this thing with her hair.
That's sad. It is sad that this county has been resorted to this. We can't even have professionals in quorum because you keep flipping camera around those people. It's terrible. It's a disgrace.
You are against us putting cameras in here because you won't be able to play your silly game.
The meeting's over. Meeting's over, kids.
Kids.
Once again, no public comments, no comment on the, the taxpayers don't want to speak. Taxpayers can't get anything done here because of you, Ms. Frenchco. You're costing us so much money, it's ridiculous.
So if anyone's interested in knowing about the Board of Elections notice to vacate paperwork, it's all public records. They're trying to actually mitigate it. Actually, there is a fire rated D. It's called the Federal Pacific Staff Office, it was over there, and I'm a hunk of specter. So, I mean, those have to be immediately addressed, and finally, they're doing it.
Your column, that's just funny. That's the only dysfunctional thing we have in this county. This county is running well.
Excuse me?
I'm just telling you what I read in the paper.
Did you say, I called you this much?
Your newspaper did.
Did you say, I called you this much?
You're a newspaper.
Did you say, I called you this much?
I'm a newspaper.
Show me one article where I said I called you this much.
There was something.
Excuse me?
This is the only dysfunctional thing we have.
Excuse me?
I don't want to hear you.
You don't want to hear me? Okay, go ahead.
All right, probably the circus, and everybody's walked.
Drive for you today?
Yep.
Was it worth it?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I believe that Mr. Cantala Mesa admitted to an open meetings act violation.
By shutting it down during discussion or before?
No, that executive session.
Why do you guys bicker so much during the only meeting that you guys have with the public? It's regularly scheduled in the middle for everybody to talk about.
There's Robert's rules that we're supposed to abide by and it's not supposed to be a matter of personal. Okay.
Are you to hear the, you were here for the presentation?
That doesn't answer my question.
My presentation.
Why do you guys?
I thought you were.
Were you talking to me specifically? Because I can't answer for anyone else.
I'm talking about you.
Okay. There's a lot of things that have happened since I've been here and they just bite anything that relates to progress.
Sorry.
So I'm gonna bring it up.
That's why there's three of you, so that you can fight.
Someone was supposed to do a presentation.
But you're supposed to plan your meetings and have an agenda that you follow. You guys are supposed to already know whether you agree or disagree before you get up there.
Oh, no. No.
This, I don't make the, I don't make the agenda. Um, I can't, I just now, sometimes I'm able to add things. But the president's remarks are supposed to be related to, they're adding things, but they won't, they won't allow me to accomplish.
You don't have permission.
They won't allow me to accomplish anything.
You can have whatever you want on the agenda. All those buildings you talk about, you can put them on the agenda. You can vote on it.
I actually put together, I, I put on the agenda to put a, a stabilization on for the purpose of addressing the buildings.
You don't even know what is, that we have a stabilization on. You don't even know what that is.
Ms. Frenchco, you are not here to do the commissioner's job. I am. Every day.
Okay.
And it gets tiresome. When I don't have a commissioner who shows up for work.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Ms. Frenchco. It wasn't. That Friday, we're dysfunctional.
Sorry, Kyle. I didn't mean that.
It's not your fault.
One dysfunctional thing.
Oh, it actually is.
Fifteen years we haven't had a problem.
Society's problem. Everybody, everybody participates. Everybody feeds into drama and it affects this county more than it affects any other county.
No one wants to do, no one wants to change anything.
Where are you from?
Where do you come from? It'd be nice if people wanted to take, except that some people have other ideas and they want to change it and approve them instead of hiding it.
And it's okay, you can disagree on it and move on, but nobody's done.
No, they did not because the taxpayers are losing money.
That's your opinion.
It's not an opinion. There is.
No, that's your opinion.
Forty thousand extra dollars, forty thousand extra.
And what about, what about what HR lost when we had to readvertise?
You didn't readvertise.
When we had to go out to bid again. How much did they lose when we had to go out to bid again? You know how much that was?
Nine hundred dollars, I think.
Yeah. Was anybody, did anybody get anything for that?
Does, what are you talking about?
See, you pick and choose. You pick and choose. There was somebody over there that did something, but you won't do anything to that person.
No, you, you.
See, that's you playing favoritism because she's a friend of yours.
No, you, you, you're making no sense. And I think you might be trying to talk about things that really to county business and decisions outside of a public.
The press is here.
It doesn't matter. The meeting's adjourned. You're talking, you're talking about discipline with someone.
The meeting is over.
Yeah, so you can't.
Right, but the press is here.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
That wasn't on our meeting. That wasn't on our agenda.
It doesn't matter. You can't talk, you can't try to talk about things that relate to public business like this.
When I'm videotaping.
I'm sorry?
You shouldn't do it when I've got my camera running. You definitely should not do that.
As long as the sunshine, as long as the press is here.
But the, but the press is here.
It doesn't matter.
The meeting's adjourned.
But you're talking about all this.
They have no idea. They've been here for twenty years. They keep on boasting how long they've been here and they still don't understand something.
You're discussing public business outside of an open meeting.
Is, are you not discussing things here?
You're discussing public business outside of an open meeting right here on the table.
I have a question. Is she not discussing public business?
The press is here. Are we allowed to do?
Is she not doing that right now?
I believe so, but.
She can discuss that with whoever she wants to, except you two.
Yes.
What's that?
She can discuss it with anybody she wants to, except you two.
Well, we're in the room. How could she discuss this?
And we have the press here. And the press is still writing.
Wait a minute.
He got my camera right here too.
I have to leave the room?
He cannot, you keep your mind shut.
I didn't call the meeting. If she called the meeting, she's discussing, she's breaking the sunshine law, not me.
No, no, individuals don't break it. Public bodies do.
I didn't break the sunshine law.
Yes, you did. I got it right here.
We broke the sunshine law, as I said, because we're talking.
You're talking about.
So only French knows how to talk.
So she can talk, but we can't address it?
What are we talking about? Potential discipline and things like that?
You bring it up at the next meeting.
Yes.
Well, why is she?
Go read the orange, or yellow book.
Why is she bringing?
I understand what you're saying. I understand, but it's kind of difficult when you have the press here who's still writing, who's still writing.
You can talk to the press, but you can't talk to her.
Correct.
Well, why, we don't.
I've been around this, you know.
No, I understand. You probably are right. I'm sure. I'm just saying.
But I wasn't when I said it.
You know, I don't know. I would never sit in front of a camera and behave the way you two behave. I would never do that.
There's three. The two.
What's that lady do? She's an innocent person.
I'm speaking to you and I'm speaking to you. I can speak to her anyway.
I'm not breaking a sunshine law. I'm not making any meetings.
Yes, you are.
What did I do?
Look.
This is.
What did I do?
I have a lot of wins in sunshine law cases.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Now, what did I do to break the sunshine law?
Well, first off, you, that executive session you mentioned, and you advised her to call up the lawyer. She can't do that.
I didn't advise her to call the lawyer.
Yes, you did. It's right on the video.
No, 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 no.
Yes, you did.
Oh, about executive session, about what occurred in executive session?
Yeah, you can't, she can't do that.
She's a commissioner.
She can't do that.
So she has to recuse herself on everything to do with that?
No. No, you have to hold another executive session.
Okay, but follow me here. We had an executive session.
Yeah.
Where all three commissioners were invited. She brought up something that was in executive session.
Right.
I said, we have an attorney that we discussed it in executive session.
Yeah.
I suggest you contact the attorney.
Did it have, you, you, she can't contact the attorney.
She's a commissioner. She's gonna have to.
No, she cannot. That has to be done in executive session. So you need, if you want her to talk about it, you have to call another executive session and make sure she's there.
Executive session. We were here.
They wouldn't, the, the staff didn't give me the right number to call it to it.
I didn't see anything.
Can you call any executive session? I don't even know.
Was that, was that executive session to discuss impending, pending or executive?
Yes.
Legal action?
Yes.
Yes, as long as.
Pending or imminent?
As long as the state gives us that waiver.
You'll have to look at the exact language that we put in. You can, you're free to look at the agenda item.
Yeah, but the context of it has to be the same too.
Okay, but you see our dilemma here. There were two commissioners that went into executive session. Now, she's bringing up something that we discussed in executive session that no, she knew nothing about.
Yeah.
So what are we supposed to do? I said, contact the lawyer. It wasn't in the news. It was an executive session.
It was in the news about the flood, the people being told they're.
The only thing, well, hold on. What was in the news?
Well, yeah, it was about flood. It's about flood, right?
It had nothing to do.
Are you suing somebody or are they suing you?
I can't discuss that right now because we're not in executive session.
A public boss, a public boss is public knowledge.
No, I, I'm not discussing that unless we're in executive session. I'm not gonna put the county at risk.
Ha, you are already. You, you, you put the county at risk just because you come here and you seem to want to fight rather than discuss. Yeah, I think you'd see your whole attitude. You're sitting back in your chair, and you, you're listening and looking for a moment to attack. You're like a bulldog.
No, I'm trying to run a meeting.
No, you're, you're, you're looking for a reason to attack. Look, I know you're disappointed that.
We'll have to agree to disagree. I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's your opinion, sir. You're allowed to have that opinion.
And I, I'm honestly allowed to bring, I'm honest.
Do whatever you have to do, sir.